Good evening, Gene.
Good evening, my good friend, Mr. Mellon. How are you?
Fine, fine.
Not a sunny day.
There'll be others.
Was Mahoney down the wharf working away?
Yep. He was working in the rain.
He's amazing. Hello.
Hello.
Hey, Josh.
Hey, Gene.
Hey, guys.
Mark. I just emailed you, Gene and Mark, revised goals for Tony that we've...
Yeah, I got it.
All right. I got it, I got it. I read it, but I got it.
Hopefully, I remembered what we were going to change correctly. We'll discuss that later.
Are you going to go over that in bits and pieces of...
I'm just going to go over the ones that we are changing.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Mark. Hi, Gene. Hi, Josh.
Hey, Dean.
I am having trouble logging into the account. So I'm just going to go on mute and try and figure that out. But we are open and live. I just can't stream it unless I'm logged in. So, and I can't, you know, like, the chat and stuff like that. So I'm going to try on that, but you guys can get started.
Okay. All right. Give it one or two more minutes while Tony does his work and get started.
Should get your mooring in?
I think they got mixed up. I think they mixed up my mooring and someone else's mooring. Is what I think, based on Google Earth pictures and directions from Joel Marie and other evidence. So I think I have a mooring. I think someone else's boat is on it. But anyway, sort that out.
Good boat?
Yeah.
Possession.
Yeah. All right. Well, let's give Tony one more minute, I guess. It's still only 6:31. All right. It's 6:32, so why don't we get started? The Board of Selectmen meeting of June 1, 2022 is now in session. I'll start with some opening comments. First of all, there is some sad news to report tonight, and that is the sudden passing of Marty Lucantonio. I think most people know Marty, longtime Public Works employee and fixture here in town. I don't know anything more about his death at this point, but I believe it was a sudden death sometime early today. So as I mentioned, you know, Marty has been a fixture in the Hahn for as long as I can remember. And so please keep Marty's memory in your hearts now and thoughts for his family at this sad time. I don't know, Tony, if you have the ability to mute anybody, or I should ask if anybody's on the line and not a selectman or town administrator, could you please mute yourself?
I don't have the ability yet, but I should in like the next 10 minutes, so...
All right. Yep. So if people could mute themselves, that'd be helpful.
Can I jump in here so we don't have to go back to this, brother? I am very sad about this news. I talked to Tony about it earlier today. You know, originally, we weren't going to say anything, but I did notice that his brother had posted the news on social media. So I feel comfortable now talking about it. And I am devastated. You know, Marty and I, I mean, Marty and the whole town, not just I, but go back forever. He is an icon for this town, and he we sorely miss. Just a great individual, always around to make you laugh and feel good, just a great guy. And for myself, I'll miss him tremendously.
Yeah, likewise. I just happened to be talking with him on Saturday. And he looked great. In fact, he looked as well as he's ever looked. And we just chatted a little bit about Public Works, and he was pretty happy camper with the way things were going. And that was it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I can as well just, you know, echo every comment you guys just made. I mean, getting the call today was shocking and, you know, not, I'm like so sad. And everybody at the town hall, you know, and the DPW is crushed by it. And so we're keeping his thoughts, you know, and his family in our thoughts. I mean, and we, you know, we're going to put the purple and black banners up on the town hall and on the DPW tomorrow. And we'll be a part of, you know, whatever arrangements get worked out. You know, he's definitely going to be missed, you know, definitely going to be missed. Definitely a big part of the Nahat family, so sad news today.
And I know, Tony, that, you know, we all know that not only did Tony, I mean, Marty loved Nahat, but he was a fixture down at the fire station. And every night, he would be down there talking to the people with firefighters and stuff. My hat goes out to the firefighters who had to respond today to this because I know they're all very close to him also.
Yes. Yeah. It was, it was a tough day for all of us, for sure. But we will keep them in our thoughts, like I said. And, you know, I was telling Zach, we ought to retire the number nine from the call list, you know, for good, in his memory. You know, he went by nine, you know, almost as much as he went by Marty. And I can remember that. I can remember that when I worked for the DPW as the summer kick, you know, on the summer cruise, so...
You might want to explain that to people listening, Tony, what number nine means.
Yeah, well, so, you know, every, every member of the DPW has a, has a call number on the radio. And it's, you know, just for the full-time guys. The only non-full-time guy that had a number designated was Marty, and he had number nine. So, you know, he was always referred to as nine or niner. And, you know, it was almost like more, more that than referred to as Marty. So we hystoned Zach today, we got to retire the number, you know.
He was an icon.
Definitely.
All right. Some more mundane announcements. 2022 resident stickers are available for purchase at nahat.org. Stickers are $10 each. Outstanding bills must be paid to the town, and consensus must be completed. The compost areas...
While you're on stickers, can I just ask a question? It was asked of me a few times now. Temporary stickers, somebody visiting somebody, they go to the police station to get those, and is there, I understand there's a limit to the number that the police will give out in a day per day.
Well, I'll confess, I don't know details of that personally.
Yeah, there's, there are day passes. There's, you know, only a couple of them. And, you know, generally speaking, they're not given out on, you know, really hot weekend days when, you know, residents are limited for parking spaces as it is. So, you know, it's kind of, they're not always going to be available. But always worth recalling, calling up to the police department, asking if they have any available ahead of time. And though, you know, put one aside for you.
Okay. Good to know. Thanks.
Okay, so compost areas open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 2022 resident sticker required. Visit the Public Works Department page at nahat.org for accepted materials. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera, is the last Saturday of each month from 8:00 a.m. to noon behind the DPW garage. Again, the resident sticker is required, and certain fees may apply. Visit Public Works Department page at nahat.org for more information. We have a job opening for an intern. Nahat Town Hall is seeking a college-age student for a part-time aid internship. Send cover letter and resume to kaytaylor@nahat.org by June 30. Visit nahat.org for full job description. So good opportunity for someone home for the summer from college.
They did a nice, they did a nice article on that in the item this morning.
I saw that. So those are the only announcements I had. Mark or Gene, anything else to add?
Just that I want to thank Tony and his team for putting on a great Memorial Day Monday. The weather was terrific, and everything seemed to work out well. I also want to thank Ed Menzano and Bob Fields for all the work they did. I had a great time. Actually, I said to Tony, it was the first time I ever marched other than the Little League or something in the Memorial Day parade. Because while I was town administrator, I always considered it a, you know, a parade for elected officials and such. So I had no excuse this year. I joined, I joined you guys, and I had a great time. It was wonderful, and your team, team did a really good job. I was fortunate enough to, when I was going down Wall Street, I was walking with town clerk Diane Duffy, Diane Savage Duffy. And her mother, Jean, came out with late husband's hat, Dick Savage's hat, which could be seen in the parade for many, many years. So I was, Diane asked me to wear it, and I was honored to wear it for at least half of the parade. So it was a great time.
It actually, it looked pretty good on you, Mark.
Yeah. It was, it was nice to restore the tradition with the parade, so, oh, good.
And I'll just, I'll just parrot what Mark said. That was, that was a great event. Well done. Substantially well done.
And the improvement on the sound, Tony, and the subwoofer is great. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Several motions here. The first one here is vote to reorganize the board of selectmen. At the request of Vice Chairman Canty, we're going to move this down a little bit in the agenda so he can enjoy a few more unfettered moments.
Trying to give Josh that much time to maybe change his mind.
Their power grab. All right. So that brings us to the sewer. Sewer revised rate change. I can make that motion. I moved to approve the FY22 revised rate for sewer to $11.58 per 100 cubic feet.
Seconded.
Discussion. Maybe you can explain this rate to us, Tony, and how it...
Yes. So we, basically, you know, when we go through the budget process, and which ultimately turns in, you know, is how we discover what rate we're going to charge for the upcoming year. We're looking at how much money, it's all built up of how much money we're going to spend in the upcoming year. And the bulk of those costs are the assessments. So for sewer, it's the Lynn Water Sewer Assessment. Last year, as we were building our budget, we were asked...
The news on social media. So I feel comfortable now talking about it and I am devastated. You know, Marty and I, I mean Marty and the whole town, not just I, but. Go back forever. He is an icon for this town and he we solely miss. Just a great individual. Always around to make you laugh and feel good. Just a great guy and. For myself, I'll miss him tremendously.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, likewise. I just happened to be talking with him on Saturday. And he, he looked great. In fact, he looked as well as he's ever looked. We just chatted a little bit about Public Works and. He was pretty happy camper with the way things were going and. That was it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I can as well, just, you know, echo every comment you guys just made. I mean, getting the call today was shocking and. You know. Not, I'm like so sad and everybody at the town hall. You know, and the DPW is crushed by it. And so we're keeping his thoughts, you know. And his family, in our thoughts, I mean, and. We, you know, we're gonna put the. Purple and black banners up on the town hall and on the DPW tomorrow. And we'll be a part of, you know, whatever. Arrangements get worked out. You know, he's definitely gonna be missed. You know, definitely gonna be missed, definitely a big part of the Nahat family. So sad news today.
And I know Tony that, you know, we all know that. Not only did Tony, I mean, Marty loved Nahat, but. He was a fixture down at the fire station. And. Every night he would be down there talking to the people with firefighters and stuff. My hat goes out to the firefighters who had to respond today to this because. I know they're all very close to him also.
Yes. Yeah, it was, it was a tough day for all of us, for sure. But we will. Keep him in our thoughts, like I said, and. You know, I was telling Zach, we. We ought to retire the number nine from the call list. You know, for, for good in his memory, you know, he went by nine, you know, almost as much as he went by Marty. And I can remember that, I can remember that when I worked for the DPW as the summer kick. You know, on the summer cruise, so.
You might want to explain that to people listening, Tony, what number nine means.
Yeah, well, so, you know, every, every member of the DPW has a, has a call number on the radio. And it's, you know, just for the full-time guys, the only. Non-full-time guy that had a number designated was Marty. And he had number nine, so, you know, he was always referred to as nine or niner and. You know, it was almost like more, more that than referred to as Marty. So. We high-said to Zach today, we gotta retire the number.
He was an icon.
Definitely.
All right. Some more mundane announcements. Twenty twenty-two resident stickers are available for purchase at nahat.org. Stickers are $10 each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and consensus must be completed. The compost areas.
William on stickers, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
It was asked of me a few times now, temporary stickers. Somebody visiting somebody, they go to the police station to get those and is there, I understand there's a limit. To the number that the police will give out in a day per day.
Well, I'll confess, I don't know details of that personally.
Yeah, there's, there are day passes. There's, you know, only a couple of them and, you know, generally speaking. They're not given out on, you know, really hot weekend days when. You know, residents are limited for parking spaces as it is, so. You know, it's kind of a. They're not always gonna be available. But. Always worth recalling, calling up to the police department, asking if they have any available ahead of time. And though, you know, put one aside for you.
Okay, good to know, thanks.
Okay, so compost areas open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Twenty twenty-two resident sticker required. Visit the Public Works Department page at nahat.org for accepted materials. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera, is the last Saturday of each month from 8:00 AM to noon behind the DPW garage. Again, the resident sticker is required and certain fees may apply. Visit Public Works Department page at nahat.org for more information. We have a job opening for an intern. Nahat Town Hall is seeking a college-age student for a part-time aid internship. Send cover letter and resume, excuse me, cover letter and resume to kaytaylor@nahat.org by June 30th. Visit nahat.org for full job description. So good opportunity for someone home for the summer from college.
They did a nice, they did a nice article on that in the, the item this morning.
I saw that. So those are the only announcements I had. Mark or Gene, anything else to add?
Just that I want to thank Tony and his team for putting on a great Memorial Day. On Monday, the weather was terrific and. Everything seemed to work out well. I also want to thank Ed Menzano and Bob Fields for all the work they did. I had a great time. Actually, I said to Tony, it was the first time I ever marched other than the. Little League or something in, in the Memorial Day parade. Because while I was town administrator, I, I always considered it a, you know, a parade for elected officials and such, so. I had no excuse this year. I joined, I joined you guys and I had a great time. It was wonderful and. Your team, team did a really good job. I was fortunate enough to. When I was going down Wall Street, I was walking with town clerk Diane Duffy. Diane Savage Duffy and her mother Jean came out with. Late husband's hat, Dick Savage's hat. Which could be seen in the parade for many, many years, so. I was, Diane asked me to wear it and I was honored to wear it for at least half of the parade, so it was a great time.
It actually, it looked pretty good on you, Mark.
Yeah, it was, it was nice to restore the tradition with the work of the parade, so, oh, good.
And I'll just, I'll just parrot what Mark said. That was, that was a great event. Well done, exceptionally well done.
And the improvement on the sound, Tony, and the, and the subversion is great. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Several motions here. First one here is vote to reorganize the board of selectmen. At the request of Vice Chairman Canty, we're gonna move this down a little bit in the agenda. So he can enjoy a few more unfettered moments.
Trying to give Josh that much time to maybe change his mind.
Their power grab. All right, so that brings us to. The sewer. Sewer revised rate change. I can make that motion. I move to approve the FY twenty-two revised rate for sewer. To $11.58 per hundred cubic feet.
Seconded.
Discussion, maybe you can explain this rate to us, Tony, and how it.
Yes. So. We. Basically, you know, when we go through the. Budget process. And which ultimately turns in, you know, is how we discover what rate we're gonna charge. For the upcoming year, we're looking at how much money, it's all built up of how much money we're gonna spend in the upcoming year. And the bulk of those costs are the assessments. So for sewer, it's the Lynn Water Sewer Assessment. Last year. As we were building our budget, we were asked by the. We were asked by the. Lynn Water Sewer Treatment Plant essentially to plan for a forty to fifty percent increase in our rates. In our assessment, so. That's what we did. That's what we built into last year's budget. And the current sewer rate. Reflected that. About midway through the fiscal year, Lynn Water Sewer. Actually signed their new operating maintenance contract. And it wasn't nearly as high as they expected it to be. So that reduction. Trickles down to us. So our, what we owe Lynn Water Sewer in assessment was reduced. And that's why this year's town meeting, we had a reduction in the upcoming fiscal year's water sewer total budget. So what we're doing here is we're. Water sewer bills just went out. It's the third cycle of the fiscal year. We do three billing, three bills. What we're asking to do here is for you to. Approve the revised rate. So that we can reduce the sewer rate in accordance with the savings that we're getting from. The newly negotiated O and M contract from Lynn Water Sewer. And the new, new reduction, reduced assessment to the town. So what we did was we calculated, you know, how much money. We looked at. We looked at what was the predicted amount of volume that was going to be. Well, that's what we did a few months ago. Let me start, let me, let me kind of back up. We actually ran the, we ran how much. Volume was used in, in water and sewer. We did the readings and based on that amount, we calculated how much money we needed to bring in. In order to meet, you know, what our cost was gonna be to Lynn Water Sewer at the end of the fiscal year. And we also looked at what next year's sewer rate is gonna be. So we're reducing this year's sewer rate that we've already charged residents on two bills. Down to this third bill that's gonna be flat and equal to the first cycle or the first billing of the next fiscal year. So what was $14.08 is now only $11.58. So, long story short. Because the assessment was less than what we had estimated. It's resulting in. A lower rate for us now and we're gonna carry that forward to next year.
Well, that's a relief. Guys, compared to the $14.08 rate that.
No change, no change to the water?
No, only on the sewer side. The, the water, water rate is, you know, a separate enterprise account. Well, it's not a separate enterprise account, but it's a, it's a separate budget amount and that assessment comes from MWRA. So, you know, we'll still build, we'll bring in, you know. We'll still be bringing in an extra amount of money that'll go into retained earnings so that we still have that. You know, that. Safety blanket. Between now and the end of the year. But we won't see an increase in the sewer rate once we go into the next fiscal year, if, if, you know, should you approve this.
That's good to me. Keeps the rate duration to a minimum and. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and I guess the, the only other thing I would say is if I was, you know, if I'm putting my shoe, my feet in the shoes of a resident. You know, we. Ultimately, the amount of money that we're collecting from you is the same that it would have been if we had known. You know, the new number at the beginning of the year. It, you know, the rate would have been a little, somewhere in between $11.58 and fourteen and eight cents, you know? And it would have just been that rate for three billing cycles, but the way that this worked out, the timing of it was the first two billing. Billing cycles, the rate was a little bit higher, so we're bringing it down to level it all out.
Makes sense to me. Any, any other discussion? With that, roll call vote.
Mark, go ahead, Gene.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Approve, we have some reserve officers to.
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the appointment of John Cassidy. As a reserve officer of the Nahat Police Department.
Second.
Discussion. Officer Cassidy, has he been working in Swanscott? Is that? It's been a while since some of these backgrounds were emailed out and I gotta admit, I'm a little fuzzy on that.
I know though, a lot of Cassidy.
Both of these officers are. Retired full-time officers. One, you know, Officer Cassidy in Swanscott, as you mentioned. And the other from. Officer. Castillo. From the city of Lynn.
So the, one of the things they bring to the table, Tony, is that they're fully accredited and they have all the training and all of that stuff, so. As a reserve officer, they can sit in, do details and. Fill in certain important roles when needed.
As, and especially with the new police reform. Reserve officers are required to be fully trained officers now. So. You know, these are officers that, you know, won't need to go to. A full-time academy since they've already had it. They're fully trained and. You know, have great experience, so they can jump right into the job. And fill in to those, you know, especially now in the summertime, we're so. We're so reliant on, on bringing in those extra call officers, so. Yeah.
Wasn't Officer Cassidy a reserve in the past as well here in town?
His brother.
His brother, that's right. Tim?
Yeah. Yep.
Any other discussion on Reserve Officer Cassidy?
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Eric Castillo. As a reserve officer of the Nahat Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion on, of course. All right, roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. Nahat Fire Department called firefighters.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Steven Viviano. As a call firefighter on the Nahat Fire Department.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, Tony, I see that, I know that Steven is a. Is a firefighter in the air and I know that Adam is coming up next. He is also a firefighter in Marblehead, so. This seems to follow the same. Theme that the, the Police Department was doing.
Yeah, I mean, our, our fire department. Call firemen numbers have been. Something that we've tried to build up in the last few years. We lost a, a lot of good call firemen to firefighters to. Aging out and forced into, forced into retirement essentially. So. You know, building up that reserve list is extremely important for us because of, especially, you know, being able to. You know. Residents who are firefighters, maybe not for Nahat, but for other towns. Who are in town and can help respond to fires when they're off duty. Is, you know, just such a value for us, so.
I agree.
With Steven and Adam.
Just a question on Adam Hatfield Jr. He is, Adam Hatfield's son, obviously. He's not a firefighter in Marblehead, is he?
Yes.
A, a full, full-time?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know that.
He was a firefighter in the heart for a number of years and he transferred to Marblehead a number of years ago.
Okay.
And, you know. You know, both of these guys have. You know, even though they haven't been call firefighters, you know, technically. You know, have been on scene in previous fires where they've helped our officers, you know. Roll, our, our firefighters roll out hoes or get a hydrant going, you know, so they've, they've already, you know, are, have been serving the town. In an unofficial role, so. They're familiar with our guys and our equipment and it's, it's a great fit for us.
Okay, let's vote on Steven Viviano. Call votes.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Adam Hatfield Jr. As a call firefighter on the Nahat Fire Department.
Second.
Any discussion? You're seeing non-roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Byron Doherty. As a call firefighter on the Nahat Fire Department.
Second.
Any discussion about Brian?
Tony, could you? Tell us who Brian is? I'm not quite sure I know.
Brian's new. I was just looking for the background that Austin had sent me. On, on Brian, but he'll be going into the academy. He'll be going into the call academy, so he's a new. A new recruit.
I'm sure if the chief is recommending him, he's a good recruit.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. We have a bunch of event requests.
I'll do these, I guess. I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event request. Johnson School Field Day on May, excuse me, on Monday, June 13th, 2022, starting at 9:00 AM. At the Flash Road Soccer Field. Also, the basketball tournament event requested by Jake Canty. On Saturday, June 18th, 2022, starting at 1:00 AM at the Spring Road Basketball Courts.
At 1:00 PM, just in case concerned neighbors are on the line, on the phone.
I'm sorry about that. And the last is on the hot. Firefighters Association. Two seven one eight charitable cornhole tournament on Saturday, August 27th, 2022. At the Flash Road Park, starting at 11:00 AM.
Second.
Any discussion? All stuff like fun. Roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. Okay, now we return to. One we've all been waiting for, reorganization of. Board of Selectmen. All right, Mark, you wanna make first motion here?
Yeah, hold on one second, let me scroll down here. I gotta go back, actually, right?
Get back, yeah.
Okay. I move. I move to appoint Gene Canty as chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Seconded. I think probably just you and I are gonna vote on this, Mark.
Mark, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. Congratulations, Gene.
Thank you, and I, I just think it should be known that I did everything I could. To keep you in that seat.
Well, you can't break tradition here, Gene, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for stepping up here.
You know, both, both of you guys, I really have appreciated the time that I have spent with you and. Learned, not only learned a lot, but respect a lot of what you do and how you do it. Both Mark and Josh. It's been great. I wish it was by performance and not by tradition.
We got your back, Jay. Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate the kind words.
Doesn't work, huh?
I move to appoint Mark Cullen as vice chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Josh Antrim, I.
Gene, Canty, I.
And there's one for you, Gene. Oh shit, there.
Okay, I'm already losing it.
Okay, Gene, I move to appoint Josh Antrim as recording secretary for, of the Board of Selectmen.
And I will second it.
So now you guys have to vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Mark, I.
All right. Reorganized. So I guess that means, Gene, you get to announce ongoing business.
Let me see if I can do that. Okay, now I move to ongoing business. The town administrative goals, which I'll pass back to you, Josh.
All right, so we talked about this a couple meetings ago. We went through the goals we had drafted for Tony. There were a couple that, when we had them all compiled, we thought needed a bit of revision. So I took, took a stab at revising those goals and Tony, I don't know if you've seen those yet. I also snuck in a new one. Which we can discuss. Is it possible for you to share those on the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just, we'll, we won't go through the ones we've already agreed upon, but just the ones that were slightly revised.
My screen's backwards, so my mouse. You know, is right when it needs to go left.
Yeah.
Here we go. I got you. I'm on it. Can you see it?
Yes. And maybe you wanna, are the markup shown in the, in the comments or? You have to scroll down to get anyone. Yeah, okay. Right, so. Number four there. I, you see my chat on the right side there. That had written as quarterly. Status reviews and I think we had talked about that being maybe too frequent or not meeting the. The schedule of the CPC committee and so I just changed that to reviews with. Stats of newly completed planned CPC projects. I also eliminated the, the. Ones related to the school on, based on the discussion last time that the school, you know, has an elected school committee and. So they are really the right ones to address that. And I also reworded six point five. To be consistent with the article that was passed at annual town meeting. So that those new wording there provide for professional technical assistance services to support town with understanding our housing needs. Establishing housing goals and identifying housing strategies which may lead to the development of a housing production plan or other housing strategy. Those, those are copied directly from the article at annual town meeting, so that should be pretty straightforward. I think. And then number nine there, this is the one I slipped in, so we should take a moment to talk about this. Something that Tony and I had talked a little bit about the other day. See, we can make some progress. It seems like we have identified. The locations of these rights away and. In my opinion, it would be nice to start making sure those get marked. So. In my opinion, it would be nice to start making sure those get marked, so, um, I don't know. Tony, Gene, Mark, any thoughts on the, um?
Uh, I, I'll jump in a little, um, Josh here. Uh, I think Little Nahat has been, um, surveyed pretty thoroughly and we know the rights away in Little Nahat. There are a few other areas behind. I think, I think we had divided the town into ten segments. Um, we did survey, I, I'm not sure, Tony, you might have done some since I left in two thousand twelve, but, uh, Little Nahat was done. Um, if the second area was basically, um, Bass Point area to Spring Road. Um, those have all been identified and researched. I'm not quite sure the rest of the town. Um, we've done the, the research that's necessary for the deed and registry of deed research. Um, but I do support the, uh, the effort to continue this. Uh, um. And begin marking these rights away, says public rights of ways. Uh. It may require a little bit more work, but. Yeah, I, I just don't think everything has been identified yet.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I made it, I literally made it kind of a soft goal by saying make progress on, um. You know, with some of those things in mind.
Did, did the, um, I know the planning board had put a lot of work into those rights away. And they were performing certain actions and follow up on getting those things. Corrected. Has that been completed? Do we know?
Um, so the planning board, I think when you were, when you were on there, um.
Yep.
Was when a lot of like the, when the surveying work of Little Nahat was completed. Um, the next step, you know, really that's about as far as like the planning, the planning board's jurisdiction goes. As far as, you know, getting encroachments removed, it kind of gets elevated up to my office and your office. Um, you know, so I know the previous town administrator and myself, along with Dan Script. Um, you know, wrote letters and visited the abutters of the rights of ways in Little Nahat. Um, each one of them is unique. They're very, it, there's definitely not like a one size fits all approach. Um, so they've all been put on notice. Um, that was like my first year, so that was right before COVID hit, um, and a lot of it kind of got put on the shelf, so. Uh, but we have, um, some sales or construction of properties that are abutting or encroaching and we're working with the, um, owners or contractors to make repairs or fixes on those encroachments. Um, before they go up for sale. And, uh, you know, there's a legal process that's involved in some of these that, you know, it just changes, like I said, each one is kind of unique. Um, so we're. As far as like what has been done so far. Um, it's the communication, you know, it's gone for Little Nahat. It's been, uh, surveyed, noticed, uh, in-person communication. Now the next step, really, it's been kind of, it's been like two years since we've done anything because of everything else that's been going on, but. Right, the step is to kind of go one by one and start making the, start making like, you know, uh, a, an action plan, uh, for those ones. That have the survey, you know, you really need that survey to help you with the legal case that you're making, so.
Um, I, I would certainly be, uh, Mr. Chairman, be willing to sit down with, um, with Tony and Dan, um, to look at what else needs to be done for the rest of the town, um, and perhaps develop a, uh, a schedule or a timeline. As Tony said, Little Nahat is definitely done. Little Nahat is, is all land court registered, so it, it is what it is. Um, the rest of the heart is not necessarily land court registered. Dan, jump in anytime you want here, but, um, um, I, I, I would love to sit down with, um, with you, Tony and Dan and, um, put a plan together.
Yeah, there's actually, you're, you're actually right. But you are right. There is a, there's a definitive plan in land court that actually is dated, I think, like right around nineteen-ten. That sort of shows how all these law courts split up originally by the Nahat Land Company. And believe it or not, those rights of ways are pretty much registered right there. Uh, we have some issues with the wording of the deed just back then and the ones that have come subsequently. But most of them are pretty clearly delineated in terms of paper, and as Tony mentioned, we're working with the new owner at one thirty-eight. Uh, Wilson Road to, uh, clear that out and, uh, hopefully that'll create some momentum and we'll take it up Wilson Road and round it, round the turn into Nahat Road and go from there.
Tell you who's got a great knowledge of all this is Cal Hastings.
Yes.
If, if we wanted to bring him in and, and a meeting and discuss it, or, or, or attend his meetings.
And I've, and I've also kept, uh, I've, I've, um, asked the CPC to, you know, not pull back the previous funding that was allocated for rights of ways. So we have funding, CPC funding, you know, waiting to be used to, and, and that funding would basically be used for, you know, when, I like how we wrote in this, in this goal, marking public rights of ways, so. Marking to me is not only just signage or, you know, a painted marking on the road, but it's clearly defining the sides, you know, the, or the, the end of these rights away.
Right.
Um, so we can use those funds to buy set of stairs, um, buy plantings, fencing, you know, signage, you know, anything that's going to make the right of way clearly marked and available to the public, so. You know, especially with Little Nahat, you know, there's, these rights of ways are not flat, you know, many of them are significant drop off from the street. And then when you get to the edge, there, they go all the way to the coast, it's a significant drop off to rocks and cliff. So, you know, I'm not going to just open rights of ways without having the funding to make sure that they're safe for people. Make sure, you know, and I also don't want to, I don't want to just go and, you know, bulldoze, so to speak, um, you know, property. I want to make sure that we're being, you know, that we're taking them back, we're doing the right thing, but we're, we're working with the abutters to, who may have absorbed an encroachment when they purchased the property, you know, and we're trying to find a way that, um, we get these rights of ways open and available, but also, you know, work with the abutters as best as we can too, so. Trying to, you know, go at it the best way possible.
Uh, uh, Tony, just one final thing here. I, I think you're absolutely right, Tony. Uh, particularly in opening some of the rights away along the heart that the most important things are. I think we know what, what is the pub, what are the public, public ways. Uh, whether you open them to the public because of safety issues is a whole different matter. Um, so we need to be careful with that. Um, it's like, like I said earlier, land court, uh, Little Nahat is all land court. We know what it is. Basically, the abutters of the, of the rights of way, I think, know that they, they abut a right of way. Um, there, there is some encro, encroachment on, on some of them and we need to deal with that, um, at a future date. But as you get into the, uh, into Big Nahat and some of the other areas, it's not entirely clear. Um, what the right of ways are or where they are. Um, so I think a lot of research has to go into that. I give you one example of Little Nahat. Uh, when we all growing up, there was a right of way that went from Howe Road to Shaw Beach. We all thought that was a town right of way. Um, and we didn't realize until they started the development of the how, of the, um, of all of those new houses in, on, on, on the hard road, Little Hard Road and our road, that in fact, it wasn't a public right of way. It was a right of way that was dedicated to the property owners on the Howard State. Uh, when I think there were twenty-six property owners there. Um, at that time, the town was successful in, in negotiating with all of the twenty-six, um, property owners to turn over their, their rights to the town. So it is now a town right of way. Um, but there are many of those around town. Um, um, Gene, there, there are a number of them up by your house. Um.
Yeah.
That could go out to the water in Lafayette Terrace and those areas. But we don't have the, the, um, the information right now to, you know, delineate where those rights of ways are. So I think we need a lot of work to do, uh, when we get into Big Nahat. Before we, uh, as Tony had, uh, has said, Little Nahat is very clear. Uh, he knows where it is and and who owns it. Um, Big Nahat is a whole another kettle of worms. I remember when I first started as town administrator, Tony, that there used to be a preambulation around the heart and after the second year, I was like, whoa, I don't know if I want to join that because I'm not sure who's, who's property I'm walking on here. Uh, and so until we figure that out, I, 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 you know, um, I think we have to be careful.
Yeah. So, so where, where do we, where do we begin in uh, reapproaching this again?
Well, as I said, Gina, uh, uh, we had originally in town and originally divided the town into ten map segments. Uh, I believe we have done all of the legal research and survey for three of those segments, Little Nahat, uh, Bass Point up to Spring Road, but the rest of the heart, I don't believe we've done yet. Um, so I think that's where we begin.
Okay, I think the planning board could help us out with.
Oh, definitely.
As far as like the mapping out part process on the big, on Big Nahat. Um, certainly a CPC eligible, uh, grant application. Um, and then as far as the town actually making like physical improvements to the land, um, that's something that I'm going to be working on, you know, over the next year, uh, per these goals. You know, and try and picking off like the low hanging fruit, the easiest ones, the ones that we have the fund, you know, have enough money to do what it takes to reopen them. Um, like I said, not every, everyone is different. Um. So it's, it's, uh, just kind of coming up with that action plan and following through with it.
Well, they'll, they'll be, the planning board will be reorganized and at their next meeting. And maybe we can go from there and, and decide on who to contact to, uh, to get it started over there. You've got a good relationship with Cal, Tony.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, maybe, uh, I, I, like I said, I'd be as a member of the, of the board who has some experience in this, be willing to, um, uh, work with sort of a member of the planning board. Uh, Tony and Dan and, um, sort of start planning out a, a, um, putting a plan together for this.
Excellent.
Um, all right, so it sounds like, um, we're all good with these revised words of the existing, uh, goals and the addition of this new goal?
The only other thing I'd bring up, uh, was, you know, when we spoke earlier, the, um, you know, they say March twenty-twenty-two to March twenty-twenty-three. Um, you know, where we are starting June, um, it might make sense for these goals to kind of align with the fiscal year. And then, and then give me thirteen months to get them done.
Uh, I, I agree. It, it, it makes sense, you know, based on today's date of being June first, but it also makes sense, uh, based on, um, following town meeting, so that, you know, articles pass a town meeting, um, can sort of be folded into your goals for the upcoming year, so, um, I definitely support that, that change. Um, Mark and Gene, do you have any thoughts on that? So it would be July first to July first or?
I think, uh, it makes sense because a lot of these goals are dependent on funding that has been approved at town meeting. It, uh, it doesn't begin until July first, so I think it's a good idea.
Likewise.
All right, so, um, I'll, I'll, um, volunteer to, um, put this in the same template that we had it in, uh, last year, uh, where we all, uh, sign off on the document and Tony has a chance to uh, write comments at the bottom and it gets submitted into his, um, his personnel folder.
Right. I think that's good, Josh. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I also recommend that, uh, we follow, um, Josh's, um, when he decided last year to, you know, take a look at, uh, the votes of town meeting. Maybe we can have like a quarterly, quarterly review of, um, of town meeting vote and how we're progressing on that. I thought that was an excellent, uh, exercise last year.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get together with Josh on that and, and take it from him.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Mark. All right, so I'll get these, um, typed up onto the template and, um, up to Kristen so that we can all sign off. So, um, preserving East Point is next on the agenda.
Right.
Sorry to.
I was making some notes.
Okay.
Who's handling? Preserving East Point here.
Uh, well, I can provide one quick update. Um, on May twentieth, uh, there was a hearing at, um, Salem Superior Court on the, um, Article ninety-seven, uh, case, which is the, the case, um, where the claim is that Northeastern dedicated this property as conservation land and, um, I think, uh, a known Northeastern, um, filed for, um, um, oh my gosh.
A summary judgment.
Yes, summary judgment, meaning the judge decides, you know, yes or no right now. And, um, so, uh, that, that meeting happened and I, I believe the judge has, uh, I think it's sixty days to, um, decide his opinion on that, and, um, if he does not rule in favor of summary judgment, it goes to a jury trial sometime in the fall. Uh, that's the only update I had.
Any further discussion? Anybody?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Where are we going to now? Town, town administrator's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, um, I have quite a lot, um. So at any point, feel free to, you know, stop me and, um, ask a question.
Just FYI, Tony, you're still sharing the, uh, goals on the screen.
Thank you. Uh, so, you know, first off, as we talked about earlier, you know, town meeting, um, about a week ago now and, uh, you know, we had, uh, you know, eighteen or so folks who stayed the whole way and, you know, it's so appreciative of all the folks who are, you know, involved from the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Moderator, the Town Clerk. Um, you know, the CPC and all the residents and the, um, you know, the poll workers. Uh, you know, there's just so much like that. That's, that process starts back in December, you know, and that's, that's, there's so many different things that, um, you know, probably don't see from the outside, you know, that goes into having that be successful. Um, and I'm just so grateful for, you know, everybody that was involved in our team. Because, you know, once again, we've had, it was a, um, you know, a successful town meeting, um, that I felt like, um, you know, we were well prepared for, um, that we had a lot of support from the residents on the things we were promoting. Um, you know, a lot of great questions were asked, you know, from. Um, you know, a lot of great questions were asked, you know, from, I don't know, I just, you know, from start to finish. Uh, that process, you know, takes a lot of work and a lot of people, a lot of time and it was uh, it shows off in the end, you know, when you have a successful meeting like that, so I'm very appreciative of that. And as you guys mentioned Memorial Day, um, you know, I really, the Memorial Day Committee, uh, the Manzano's were, at town meeting, the Manzano's were announced as the Citizens of the Year and um, you know, they really take the lead on the Memorial Day Committee too. Um, and honestly, you know, they they really handle it from start to finish, uh, you know, letting us know what we need to do to prepare for it, getting everybody uh, involved in the parade. You know, the DBW, the police, the fire, the elected officials, you know, all the participants. You know, they have a role in it too, but you need that committee really to to ensure a successful day and, you know, it definitely was, so very appreciative to the Memorial Day Committee and everybody involved in the uh, in the in the in the event on uh, on Monday.
It's interesting, it's interesting, as you were going through these the meeting and and the Memorial Day parade, the one word that comes to mind is really seamless. Uh, they were they were seamless, they were just moved along, never stopped and accomplished everything that you wanted. Great, great job.
Again, you know, it's uh, so probably one of the best, Allison and I were laughing a little bit about this. So before town meeting, the Finance Committee met, you know, right before town meeting to do their final votes and they were uh, they were had a similar comment, Gene. They had said, you know, they commended Allison um, for, you know, how seamless she made it seem for them, you know, and how how like things progressed throughout the last couple of months and you know, how how smooth the process was this year and you know, Allison and I were like chuckling as they were saying that because behind the scenes, you know, it's frantic, it's it's chaos. Uh, you know, there's so much going on and, you know, so from when you get a compliment like that, Mark, you know, being in my position, when you get the compliment of like, wow, it was so seamless, it was so, it went so smooth, like that's the best compliment you can get because, you know, it means you know, every you were you were able to handle everything and the final product, you know, was uh, enjoyed by those who received it, so.
I think, Tony, what it really reflects is that the collaboration that you and Allison and your team have with the Finance Committee and the Finance Committee with you. Uh, we both have um, different jobs to do, uh, but you do them um, in unison and you're cooperating with each other and um, you know, it makes for a very smooth town meeting. Um, it's not, it's like you said, it's not as if you don't have differences in those meetings on um, Monday nights or whenever you meet with the Finance Committee, because I'm sure you both go at it once in a while, but you work it out behind the scenes and as a result of that, um, you're able to um, present a very smooth town meeting. So.
Yeah, and I I gave I gave the example of the Thursday night meeting before town meeting where we did our like dress rehearsal with the Finance Committee and the Moderator and um, you know, a a question about the sewer borrowing and the percentage rate for the loan came up. Allison went and, you know, looked that up, sent it to me the next day. You know, at at ten PM the night before town meeting, when I was finishing to put all my book and all of my info together, I printed that email and stuffed it in that section of the binder. And then what do you know? It came up during town meeting and I had the answer printed out right there, was able to answer it on the floor, you know, showed all the confidence in the world to the resident who was asking the question, you know, was like that we knew the answer. And so it's like something like that where, you know, um, by doing those things, by spending the extra time and kind of getting together and being prepared, um, it it works out to end up being, you know, a a successful meeting, so. I just was, you know, it's it's it it dates back to, like I said, it dates back to December and a lot of hard work and anyways, I'm just uh, very pleased and happy with uh, how how everybody worked together and how it turned out, so. So after town meeting, I, you know, I was away last week and came back uh, on on Sunday. I was here for the for the parade on Monday and back to work yesterday and today, so definitely re uh, kind of climbing out of a hole of, you know, anything that I missed last week and then certainly there were things in the last two weeks leading up to town meeting that kind of got put on the shelf, uh, so a lot to do now. So I have a ton of quick updates. Council on Aging is back open. Uh, they were closed, you know, uh, heading into prior to town meeting. Um, but they're back open uh, to the to the public. The uh, Police Department notified me of a uh, coyote incident that occurred while I wasn't in town. Uh, I put a call in with our um, dog officer. I know that um, the resident um, involved in this situation uh, has spoken with him, so I'm looking to get, you know, that information uh, and see what our next step is potentially, you know, dealing with the state and mass wildlife on that. You know, and it's been a, it's been a hot topic, you know, in our town and and one, you know, an issue of concern for residents, so um, that's on my list to uh, follow up and see what our next step is going to be there. July ninth fireworks are confirmed. We'll be having the fireworks on the ninth, so between now and the fifteenth, uh, putting final details together and getting ready for a group meeting with, you know, police, fire, DPW, emergency um, management and getting our final plans put together for the ninth. It sounds like the races, uh, the youth races and the adult road race are going to be on the fourth of July. And we are working with the committee to try to finalize those those details. I haven't heard much about a Horribles Parade yet, uh, so trying to figure out if we're going to have a Horribles Parade uh, the night before. So working on that, on the details for the celebrations for Fourth of July. It is June first, so we're at the end of our current fiscal year, so there's a lot of work to be done. You know, between our accountant and all of our department heads, uh, you know, working on um, you know, getting any outstanding bills paid, uh, you know, balancing their accounts, uh, putting in any requests for encumbrances or requests for budget transfers. Um, that's that's kind of a, the next few weeks uh, process for all of the department heads. And if there's any budget transfers that might need to occur, we would have a joint meeting with you three and the Finance Committee before the end of June uh, to complete that process. And tomorrow Allison is actually on her first implementation call with Munis. Uh, so, you know, we're jumping right into that process of um, starting to switch over to the, that that's going to be a long time, but the first call starts tomorrow. Um, we will, we we do qualify for a single audit um, because of the funding amount, because of the money that we got through COVID and ARPA. So we will be, I will be uh, bringing a uh, and like a uh, an audit plan to your attention at the next meeting uh, for you all to review and sign off on. Let's see, water and sewer bills went out, as I mentioned earlier, they went out, so they'll be due in a month. We have the the National Grid uh, work on the on Castle Road. I wanted to give a quick update. Phase one is basically from, you know, Nahot Road where the uh, Coast Guard Station is all the way to Flash Road. That should be complete, um, you know, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, after school, after school breaks for the summer, they'll be going into phase two, which is from Flash Road to Gardner. And then phase three, that will go probably till about September. And then phase three is adding a main down Goddard Drive, which would only be another week or two after that, so maybe goes into the end of September, early October. We, the that portion of Castle Road was paved in the last couple of years. So we've had a couple calls with National Grid about the importance of keeping that as as nice as possible. I have them, I had them agreeing to a center line to curb repavement for that section of the of the work instead of like a six a six foot wide um, trench cover. Uh, we'll also have to work with them on uh, trash collection. So while there, that area of town uh, gets picked up on Thursday mornings. Uh, so we'll have to work with them on maybe delaying the start of work till a little bit later in the morning so that waste management can get around and collect trash before the roads get detoured. And of course, we'll have to communicate that with the residents in the area too. Um, so there's a lot of like little details involved in that section of their of their work. Also, tonight is uh, tonight is a big milestone for the Linway uh, sewer project. And they'll be pulling a thousand foot section. I don't know if if anyone drove down the Linway in the last day or two, you would have seen that that thousand foot section in the median. Uh, so it's already fused together above ground and now tonight they're going to be pulling it through. So that's a big milestone for the job. Keeping our fingers crossed that that goes well tonight. Uh, Flash Road Courts, so while I was away, um, the uh, contractor reached out to Zach that their subcontractor for the painting of Flash Road Car Courts is available uh, next week. So Zach um, signed them up to come in and get it, get the courts painted, uh, which means we might potentially be doing a ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks here and and reopening the courts. At this point, I've told them to go ahead and and paint the courts without the pickleball lines. So I'm making a, I'm trying to make progress in finding an alternative location uh, for pickleball while we work together to find a permanent dedicated location for pickleball. Um, and and we can always add lines later. It's easier to add paint than take it away, so. It's exciting that we'll hopefully be, you know, uh, cutting the ribbon to another recreational facility that's been uh, you know, kind of in in need of repair for, you know, a long time. We're also working very hard on uh, scheduling the farmers markets for the summer. Uh, so we'll be doing our first one in July and then August, September and October. They'll be on a consistent Saturday, so if it's going to be the second Saturday or the third Saturday, we're we're still finalizing that detail, we'll put we'll put uh, information out to the public as soon as this finalized, but uh, we are making progress there, so it'll be a Saturday each month of July, August, September and October.
Hey, Tony, on the uh, the pickleball ball issue, if if they want this discussion about temporarily putting tape down, if they, that group wishes to do that, is that an okay and approved?
Uh, it's not an okay yet. Um, I'm going to be, you know, I I, the last time I spoke with the pickleball group was uh, the Finance Committee meeting days before town meeting. And then, you know, after town meeting, I was away for a week. Um, and at that meeting, I, you know, promised that I would get together with them to find an alternative location for them while we work together to, you know, submit an application to CPC next year for for a permanent dedicated location, so. Um, I want to see that through. I'd prefer to find them an alternative location somewhere else and allow for you know, the kids to be able to enjoy the tennis, the new tennis courts and basketball courts. And uh, I want to give that some effort, so I haven't had a chance to meet to to discuss with them. But if I can't, if we can't find some alternative location, certainly, you know, like I said, adding tape or um, paint later is always an option.
Okay. All right.
What else do I have here? Um, the town is, we had today in our department head meeting, we had um, Cliff, Ben, Lars and Alan who's conducting our human resources uh, analysis, um, come and do an overview with all the department heads and schedule one on ones with each of them. So that process, you know, it's is ongoing. What we're doing there is doing, you know, they're looking at our HR functions where we, you know, can improve. They're doing a similar analysis for the town of Swamp Scott. And then both of those analyses are kind of being laid over each other to see if there's any regional regionalization application for for both towns that'll help, you know, make improvements, so. That project is ongoing. The Friday before town meeting, we submitted an application to EEA for a planning grant related to the housing related to zoning requirements for the MBTA multifamily's housing. Uh, chapter three.
Three A.
Three A. Section three A of chapter forty, I think it is.
That's right, section.
Yeah, uh, so we we actually submitted a grant uh, to EEA. Uh, MAPC would be our partner on this. They would take, they would pay, you know, for zero dollars from the town, they would pay our municipal share and use the grant to help guide us through the process whenever we see the new guidelines from DHCD. Um, so we got that application submitted, uh, which is good. Hopefully we get good news there and we can um, link that up with the CPC money that was approved at town meeting. Um, and then we have other grants that we are seeking uh, sooner than later, their deadlines are mid-June. Uh, many dealing with coastal climate change preparedness. So our CZM grant for Forty Steps and Short Beach Dune, our hazard mitigation grant for um, Short Beach Dune, you know, those are ones that we're working on and trying to get done in the next week or week and two weeks. So um, more to come on that as well. And I'll stop there.
Well, sounds like a busy week ahead. Hope you, hope you enjoyed your vacation.
Yeah. It it's just a couple of things, we can discuss most of this later, but um, on paving. Is they going to begin paving in town?
Yes, so we uh, we we put a paving list together, uh, procurement's the next step. We were seeing if we were trying, the biggest problem with paving for the town in the heart usually is that the cost of mobilizing equipment all the way out here into the heart tends to tends to increase our cost of the job. So I was asking, we reached out to Swamp Scott to see if they had put a procurement out yet. And sometimes by doing a joint procurement, we're able to get a better rate. So that's where we are right now, but the plan is to be doing spring paving very soon.
Is the, is the even plan that's on the website, is that up to date?
It is, but we've, I, I guess it's not, it's, it's, we've adjusted it once in a, like, every year we'll adjust it based on any type of work, like, so National Grid, like, the section of Nahot Road from Pond Street down to Spring, you know, wasn't due for this year, but then National Grid had done that, you know, Gas Main work last year, so it really needs to be done, so, you know, we're getting, we, it's moved up the, up in the list. So it is on the website. We try to, we try to follow that as close as possible.
Okay. Another question I have, apparently, there was an article in the Globe about water testing in the different communities. And it indicated that Lynn Swampscott, Kings Beach, Lynn Beach were very low in their water testing results. When do we do ours and how often do we do ours, Tony?
We just started, we just started testing the beaches this week. We do them, I think, three times a week.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, Kings Beach, that, that combined sewer fall in stormwater outfall pipe there, you know, that's, has led to many, many shutdowns and high bacteria count. They're, they're, they're dealing with a very difficult issue over there. Luckily, we, luckily, it doesn't, it doesn't travel over to our beaches.
Right.
So we, we only, you know, if, if, we only, we only really make an announcement if a beach is going to be closed.
Understood. Just checking that, just, I, I was curious. Mark, Josh, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on that beach testing, Tony, do you know what day of week we do our testing?
We do.
I hate to put you on the spot, but if you don't, if you don't know offhand, you can let me know.
I think it's usually, I think it's usually Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday, I'd say Saturday, I think.
So is this a few times a week, something that's they do? Because I remember only doing it once a week.
You know, I honestly, let me double check.
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because beach testing is something I always had a problem with. Because I'm not quite sure we're testing sometimes, you know, you take a test and it tests say part high bacteria. Well, the high bacteria could have been the day you were testing or the day before. And then the following day, you know, the test is fine. So I mean, so you're telling people to stay off the beach because it was tested positive, but that positive test was a result of yesterday.
Forty-eight hours ago.
Yeah, most cases, and, and then it's at least twenty-four hours before minimum, sometimes more, more likely forty-eight, before you can re-sample and test again and get the results. Because the state used to come in and do it like on Thursday for us, had it scheduled. And I get the results back on Friday morning saying, your beach is closed. I'm like, oh my God, right, for the weekend. Right, and, and I, I remember saying to the state, we'll do our own testing. We'll do it on Monday.
So we definitely do Monday because I got, I got results today.
Okay, good. Because it gives you, you know, twenty-four, forty-eight hours to retest before the weekend.
Right.
It's very important. I mean, there's not a lot of weekends in our summers here, so, you know, to lose a whole weekend for our beaches is important to a lot of people.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, so if you can get them tested like, you know, on Monday or Tuesday, at least it gives you another, you know, another testing round before the weekend.
I was just looking back at Mary Lowe used to send out weekly status, right, and so those would come out once a week. And I was just looking at one that were Black Rock Beach flunked, and then two days later it passed again, so it sounds like if you have a fail, they test.
Nine times out of ten, and they're usually rain, rain-related, Josh. You know, if you have a heavy downpour, you have a lot of runoff, you may get a high, high bacteria count, and the following day it's fine.
Well, listen, while we're talking about this and Max making the suggestion, why don't we decide on what days are best and what days we can do it?
I, I don't, I don't think, we're kind of talking without all the information.
Yeah, okay.
So let me find out, you know, what days we're testing. We definitely test Monday. Whether we test again before the weekend, you know, let me double check. So let me get, let me get that information and then we'll, we can talk more about it after that.
And do we test all beaches?
All, we test all the beaches that we own, that are public.
Okay. Mark, Josh, anything else?
Uh, nope, not for me.
Well said.
We, we want to go to Citizens Forum? Anybody out there? Hello, hello?
Anything in your chat, Tony?
I got nothing. Thank you all. It's been a great Memorial Day.
Thank you, Brandon. Tony, you see anybody? Josh? Michelle?
Thanks, Tony. Hi, good evening. Michelle Capano, Ocean Street. My question is regarding the MBTA's plans to redesign the bus routes for the North Shore and the meeting that's coming up next Wednesday. And how is Nahot positioning themselves regarding the proposed changes? It's a virtual meeting, so it's going to be online via Zoom.
Okay.
So we got an email from the MBTA. I think last week, I was going through my emails that, you know, I missed while I was on vacation. And if I remember correctly, it was talking about that meeting and it briefly described some of the, you know, it kind of talked about the changes for the entire region. So, you know, we'll, we'll take a closer look at it. We'll be, you know, we'll be in attendance for that meeting. Any comments that we might want to provide, you know, as we typically do, we'll make sure that the public's aware and probably take the lead on submitting a letter if it's, if necessary. Have you had a chance, Michelle, to review the plan?
Yeah, I have, and I've responded by email to all of you. So the plan is to eliminate the morning schedules, which are around six-thirty and seven-forty-five, and replace them with a nine-thirty, ten-thirty and noon time. And then eliminate the evening commute. So for people that work in the city, because most of the people that I've seen take the bus are going into Boston or connecting via Wonderland, that's a significant impact. I, you know, for the folks I've talked to that have been taking the bus, I mean, we understand it's around, you know, centralizing the transportation needs for the area and really rapid transit back and forth to Wonderland, because that's been a, a challenge for the residents of the North Shore. So I, I think people agree with that, but to eliminate an evening commute is going to be challenging in the proposed times for the morning commute don't make any sense to the working people who work in the city between, you know, if you work, your day is seven AM to six PM. Just don't understand where the data is that they're getting that from, so that's a challenge.
Yeah, I, I agree that those, Michelle, I remember you sent that email identifying those new times and, yeah, it, without knowing the background behind why those times were changed, it did make a lot of sense to me, because anyone likely to use the, the bus service in Hot is most likely a commuter, so it seemed counterintuitive to me.
So I guess the ask I have is to also reach out to Representative Capano and Senator Crichton. Crichton sits on, I believe he's chair of the Transportation Commission Committee for the state, and really ask for their support around, you know, reevaluating these changes by the MBTA and coming up with a proposal that makes sense for, you know, the true business commuter. If they want to limit it to one trip a day, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I use the bus. I mean, I've been doing it for the last four years. But the current proposal is, is definitely going to be a disadvantage. And I think the other thing to note, you know, obviously with the rising gas prices, you know, people are going to hit a threshold of how often they're going to start driving into the city, you know, if they're going to look for alternate means, it is an opportunity for the MBTA to possibly capitalize, and so, you know, if more people know about this and the options that's available, they may see an increase in ridership.
That's a good point, Michelle. We'll, we'll jump on it, and we'll definitely see, we, you know, we typically ask Rep. Capano and Senator Crichton to help us out. I'm sure that they will, I'm sure they'll be happy to, to join on with our comments.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I want to adjourn?
I can do it.
Call, vote.
Mark, I'll, I.
I have mine.
Jean, can't, yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a great night.